Good morning. It's eight thirty, and I'm calling the March nineteenth meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. First thing on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
A move.
A motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, next, we have citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens that wish to address the commission on an item that's not on today's agenda? Ms. Larson, do we have anybody online?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
All righty. Next on the agenda is approval of the bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. And next, we have approval of the minutes from March fifth, two thousand twenty-four. A motion to second. Any changes to the minutes or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Next, we're going to get a construction project update for the Withdrawal Management and Detoxification Facility and the DMV from Gertz Construction. Go ahead.
Thanks for having me here today to talk about the projects and give you a quick update on where we're, what we're doing over there. So we'll start with the Clay County Withdrawal Management Center first. So the building is fully enclosed, and a lot of work is going on in the interior of the building. Right now, the masonry, we're wait, to continue with it, we're waiting for some materials to get here, and we're expecting that within the next few weeks so we can take the masonry all the way up to the roof around the building. We're also waiting for maybe a little warmer temperature so we don't have to heat and shelter around the building. Eco Construction is working on hollow metal door frame installation, backing for items that need to get mounted to the walls, things of that nature. A lot of their finished work doesn't happen for, until after we're done painting the building. Northland Glass and Glazing is pretty much complete with most of the windows around the facility. They're expecting some materials to come in at the end of the month here for the front end storefront in, main entrance of the building. So we should be seeing that installation happen in April. Fergus Drywall, they've been busy in the building for a long time now. They've have pretty much one hundred percent of the walls studded and framed, and that's what the guys are working on, mechanical, electrical rough-in, wood blocking, door frames, so that we can continue with sheet rocking. Now, half the west side of the building pretty much has all the sheet rock completed, taped, and they're currently painting right now. And then, and then they're falling into the east side of the building. There is a kind of a demising wall that goes through the middle of the building, so they're concentrating on the east side, sheet rocking and taping while we're starting finishes on the west side. Nova Fire Protection, Air Mechanical and Groberg Electric, all of them are basically currently working on in-wall and above-ceiling electrical, mechanical rough-in. And our hopes is they get far enough ahead of that so when the finishes start coming into the building, most of that work is completed. We get the ceilings put in, we get the millwork put in, and, and then they can just put their finishing touches on everything, hook up faucets and toilets and things like that. So, project in and all has gone really well. The weather has been a huge factor in that for us, as amongst other contractors in the entire community. But, yeah, that, we have had our, a few setbacks with some of the rain showers and snowstorms that we have had, but all in all, we've had a very gentle winter. So if you look in your packet, we did put together some pictures, kind of a timeline of when we started to where we're at today. Started right there, right around May fifth of last year, and those are just some chronological drone shots that we took to the present day. And then a few shots of the inside of the building where, if you go to the fourth page, sheet rock and taping above ceilings, stud wall furring on a lot of the masonry walls that, that require that. Above-ceiling rough-in, there's a lot of piping and a lot of duct work that goes above the ceiling that nobody gets to appreciate or enjoy when you walk into the building. But those contractors take a lot of heart and put a lot of heart into that work, that craftsmanship. So, and then at the bottom picture there is just, we just started painting last week, so it's coming along well. And then Alexandra did send a picture of the, this is a rendering of what the building will look like in completion. And at this time, we basically have this, I don't know if you can see my cursor there, but the rock face stone at the bottom, all the way around the perimeter. So we're waiting for this cast stone piece to come in, and then we'll get going on the rest of the facade of the building. Any questions on the Withdrawal Center?
Commissioner Campbell. Dan, but just a comment. If you look at the photo that was taken on November fifteenth, it looks like quite a bit of work had been done by that time. And if you recall, the original plan wasn't even to move forward with the bids until around that date. And that's when, that's when we had moved it up, right?
On the DMV?
No, on the, this is on the-
Oh, yes, yes, you are correct.
Yeah, yeah.
No, no, I think, I think we're thinking-
That's right. Okay, you're right, you're right. Yeah, we're thinking the DMV.
We'll get to that in a minute. I agree with you on your-
It'll be the same thing on that one, but, yeah.
Um, yeah, and, and as you drive by the building, it doesn't look like anything's been done in the last few months because-
Yeah, you're right. I got my-
It's just a big black building out there. But there is a lot going on inside. There's probably anywhere from thirty to fifty guys on job site every day plugging away in there. So, kind of losing out, running out of parking. We're testing those parking lots well. But, yeah. Any other questions?
Dan, what are we looking for, a date of completion?
Um, I believe we worked out it with Troy. I don't remember if it was September one or October one, but it's within that September timeframe.
He told us September.
Is that what Troy told you?
Yeah.
Okay, then we're, that's what we're shooting for. And we're on, we're on task for that. I just couldn't remember the exact dates off the top of my head. Okay. Well, we'll move right into the Department of Motor Vehicles. Another, you know, like Kevin alluded to earlier, was a project that we were trying to decide whether we should start this fall or last fall, or start this spring. And the challenge was to start it this fall, not knowing what we were going to head into for winter. And it was, turned out to be a great decision. So, we'll go through a little bit of an update on contractors and the project in general. Magnum Contracting has completed all the steel, steel, structural steel erection throughout the facility. Fergus Drywall has completed all the exterior and parapet, exterior walls and parapits. And the Ledge Stone has completed the wood blocking on the parapet. So this week, we started putting a roof on the building and started sheathing the exterior walls. The, very little has been done in terms of mechanical, electrical work right now. We do have all the utilities brought into the building. So once we get the building enclosed and the ground can be worked, Monday it was thought, or last Monday it was thought out, I'm not sure where it's at today, but once we get the building enclosed, we'll assess that, and we might have to put a ground thaw unit in to heat it up for a few days and then get, get going in there. But both the, there isn't a lot of underground work, so we're going to get the building enclosed, get it warmed up, get the underground done, get the concrete done, and then we're going to ton on the rest of the interiors of the building. So, so timing will work out great. When spring hits, we'll be able to put the coatings on the outside of the building, and then put on the veneers and, and the exterior skin.
We have a completion date in mind on that?
Late, late fall. And then we did, yes, last week, we, last year, the county or city asked us to level out that black dirt pile so that we didn't get snow out into fifteenth. Well, last week, we decided to push it back off so we could get the frost off of the ground because we're, we'd like to try to get parking lots going out there as soon as we can and get people places to park so they don't have to drive in dirt and mess up the site. Well, now we got a snowstorm coming, so we've, James and myself have been in contact with the city and just told them if there's an issue, we'll, we'll make sure we have a piece of equipment out there and move the snow out of the way. So. And then, again, there's some pictures, some chronological pictures attached of the construction progress through the months. We started in the middle of October and got the footing and foundation put in, and then basically put the, put it to bed for a while until the steel showed up, which came in middle of January. And they worked on that for about six weeks. And then today, we're, on the last picture, we're putting and sheathing and putting roofing on the building. So we're in pretty good shape there, and I think feel very confident in that fall timeline.
Your materials have been coming in timely.
What's that?
Your materials have been coming in-
So far, they have been, yeah, they've, we've been, being that the project was able to bid so much earlier, it's easier to procure those items. There are some items like switch gear and generator that we're, we haven't got a for-sure date on yet, but we're keeping an eye on that monthly.
Dan, the, you mentioned the, maybe putting some temporary heat in there to, is
that to do the concrete work?
Yep.
So did you incorporate any of that possibilities into your original bid prices?
Yes, we do. It's in our general conditions. So if that, we got a bid from NCODA if we had to use ground thaw for a month, so we allowed for that in our general conditions. And if you don't use that, then that gets turned over.
Okay, very good. And then lastly, you know, I, I think I did have the, my projects mixed up, but on the photo of the twenty-ninth that you have on here, it shows considerable progress being made. And, you know, I, I think originally, had we not done this, we would have been looking at the potential of, instead of a fall finish, we probably would have been looking at a spring finish.
I would completely agree with you.
You know, so, so it's, it's certainly paid off for us to, based on what I see here, to move that, escalate that starting time.
Yeah, and we've been able to save dollars just by, you know, the winter that we've had.
Yeah.
We allowed for some temporary heat stuff that we're probably not going to need and use. So there's definitely some dollars in the general conditions. That will be turned over back to the owner at the end of the project. So we're happy about that.
Any other questions for Dan? Dan, we appreciate it. You guys are doing a good job on this.
Thanks. We appreciate it.
Look forward to moving through.
Thanks for having me here, and I'll be back in whenever you need me or have more questions.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Dan.
We've got a couple items coming up from the extension. Cecilia Amadou, the Regional Director for Extension. Come on up, Cecilia.
Janice is right there.
Okay, we know Cecilia. Janice, introduce yourself, please.
Yeah, good morning, everyone. I'm Janice Tweet. I currently work at the Great Plains Food Bank as Ending Hunger two-point-oh Director, and applied for the Open Advisory Committee position.
If you could speak in microphone, please.
You can use the other mic, too. There's-
There's another mic right there.
I'm sorry. You have Genesis information in your package, so if you want to kind of look over that, and if you have any questions about, just, always.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have had the pleasure of serving on a number of committees with Janice. First, when I was Chair of the Cass Clay Food Partners, Janice was on the Steering Committee as well as a, a member on that. And I think Mindy was also on that committee during that time as well. So Janice has a really a heart for the work that a lot of what Extension does, and I think would be a valuable asset to that committee as well, to bring her insight and awareness of so many different organizations that we could potentially partner with, with Extension. So I think Janice would be a great committee member on the Extension Committee.
Any other, yes, Paul.
Similar comments. I now am on the Cass Clay Food Commission, the Steering Committee, and been working with Janice for last year, and does fantastic work there. And again, I think we're lucky to have you join us. So I would strongly recommend appointment.
Is that a motion?
Oh, sure. Let's make a motion for Janice to be a director.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion?
And just a clarification that it would not, I think we said director just now, but it would be to serve a three-year term on the Extension Committee.
Okay.
Frank?
Thank you much.
No further, oh, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, just wait.
All right. Any other comments?
Well, I, is there another topic here? Yeah, okay. We'll go with the next.
Well, we need to vote.
Oh, vote.
Janice.
Yeah, sure.
Hang on just a second. We'll vote and make it official. Okay. All, all in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the annual department update on the extension.
Feel free to pull up extra chairs.
Yeah.
All of you.
Good morning. We're excited to have a full office in our Extension Office. Over here to my left, we had Jennifer Erdol, who served as the support staff. And then we have Mindy, and then Monique. And then to my right, we have Jillian and Rosie. So this is the full office staff here today. We are going to be providing you an update from the youth development, as well as the A&amp;R staff, and then also the SNAP Ed, just updates about the work that's been happening the past year. So I will hand it over to YD, and then after YD, we'll do Jill and then Rosie.
So we did notice that you only gave us about ten minutes of time. So for brevity, we're not going to go through the entire PowerPoint that we had. So if you have that and you want to read through it on your own time, perfect. But we're going to give you a brief synopsis of our impact in two thousand twenty-three.
Feel free if you need to go a little bit over. That's, that's okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
So in two thousand twenty-three, we have five hundred and fifteen participants in Clay County 4-H. So that is a nice increase for us. We're seeing a lot more kids coming into us in different ways, including a hundred and seventy-eight new 4-Hers during that time period. A lot of those are coming to us through our after-school programs and our partner programs, and some of them through the community clubs. Of the new people, a hundred and forty-five were first-generation new 4-Hers. So when we talk about 4-H, we know that it has been a program for over a hundred years, and so we have people who are multi-generational. We have people whose grandparents and great-grandparents were in the program. A new, a first-generation 4-Her is somebody who does not have any family relation that was in 4-H before. So we're pretty proud that we're making new strides with new audiences and bringing people into the program and helping them experience that in a new way through Extension.
So Minnesota 4-H had a total of forty-one thousand five hundred and eighty youth participants last year. We had nine thousand one hundred and ninety-one new members that were in 4-H last year. Of the nine thousand one ninety-one, six thousand two hundred and fourteen were that first-generation new 4-H families, like Mindy just talked about, where they didn't have any family context or history with the 4-H program in the past. Clay County, or Minnesota 4-H has retained seventy-two percent of our youth from two thousand twenty-two into two thousand twenty-three. And youth, on average, are in the 4-H program for at least seven years. And we know through research, as well as the studies that have been conducted, that the longer young people are involved with the 4-H program, the more likely they are to gain from the positive benefits of being involved in a positive youth development program, the more likely they are to develop life skills and be able to succeed and thrive and become contributing members of their communities once they become adults.
So in 4-H, we do have two main goals, and our mission is to help youth learn and lead to become social change agents in their communities. So when we're focusing on learning, we've delivered, Minnesota 4-H delivered nearly two thousand events statewide. That includes things that we did here locally in Clay County, what some of the other counties did, and then regional and state activities that all of our youth have access to. Over twenty-four thousand youth across Minnesota showcased their learning and demonstrated growth and mastery in their project areas. Here in Clay County, we had two hundred and thirty-five people participate in our county showcases alone. And so we're giving youth platforms to share their learning, which is really helping them explore and explain to their community what they're doing with 4-H.
So that next piece we talked about, learn and then lead, is the second long-range outcome of youth involvement in 4-H. So when we look at, when we look at leadership, five thousand eight hundred and eighty-two 4-Hers across Minnesota participated in leadership events as well as groups. Ninety-two percent of those youth reported gaining confidence in their ability to lead through Minnesota 4-H. And ninety-one youth have reported having an opportunity to lead in Clay County 4-H programs. So ninety-one youth locally reported having an opportunity to lead just through 4-H programs.
Another big part of 4-H is community service and learning how to make a difference in our communities. Three in four, three out of four 4-Hers report serving in their community. Here locally, Clay County does have a program where we fund special service projects for the different clubs and groups in our program. And seventy-five 4-Hers participated in a special service program that was funded through our Clay County 4-H Federation. We also have adults that are making changes in their community. So we have seven thousand four hundred and thirty-nine screened adult volunteers in the Minnesota 4-H program. Sixty-five of those belong to us here at Clay County, and we're very proud to have a number of community members serving with us to help our youth learn and lead and make change.
Okay, so, one of the other things Cecilia just asked us to mention was specifically one of the slides in our presentation. I am the newer 4-H Youth Development Staff. I started in early October. I've been on staff for about five and a half months. I'll hit six months here in middle of April. So one of the things that Mindy and I have been very diligent, diligent about is addressing where we're each giving leadership to pieces of the 4-H program. We want to make sure that we're not duplicating our efforts and that we're not doing the same things together, but that we're one county program with two people leading significant pieces of it. So we've kind of teased that out a little bit up there. So one of the areas that I'm taking primary leadership in is our County Ambassador Program. This is a youth leadership program that runs during the course of the school year. It's something that hasn't been present in Clay County for a number of years, like, we're probably talking twenty years or so since we had county ambassadors in the program.
Why do you got to do me like that? I was in the ambassador program with Commissioner Campbell's son.
Sorry. I just outed you, hopefully.
Help me a little bit.
It's been a number of years since we had county ambassadors. And one of the goals, of course, for county ambassadors is to advance into a state ambassador role. So it's an important piece programmatically to have present. It's an important opportunity to have. And right now, we don't have, well, we haven't had that. But we're trying. We're getting a slow go at it. We've got a couple young people that are interested and passionate about it. So we're, we're getting that moving, getting that off the ground. Another major area of focus for me is animal science projects. That includes horse, all of our livestock, as well as our, our small pets and small animals as well. So I'm providing support to the committees and the families and the animal ID process and, and what animal science looks like at the county fair. So that's a piece of my area. Mindy and I are both supporting 4-H Federation Board. So our Federation Board is kind of like you, is a county board. They come together and they make decisions that affect and support the county-wide 4-H program. She and I are both supporting that board because we have functions and roles within areas of that board. I am also supporting club leaders. I'm doing club leader support through both volunteer screening and enrolling volunteers, but also helping clubs address the problems and the challenges that they face. One of the most common questions we get asked is, we don't get all of our kids to come to every meeting. So I really help them break down, what is a quality club experience, and how can we get your meetings to a point, or your club gatherings to a point that everybody wants to attend? How do we get from where we're at, where we're getting partial attendance to full attendance every time? So I'm helping clubs kind of start to address that question. And we've got some specialized training and workshops that are coming along to support that as well. And then specifically, when we look at project development committees, so the topical interest areas, I'm supporting direct support to livestock, horse, as well as dog and pets.
Awesome. I'll give you a little bit of what I'm giving leadership to. So the green team is a youth leadership team that takes place at the fair. If you go to the fair, you may have seen some of our teen leaders running around helping out with the shows. They help set up, coordinate, lead some of the programming in the 4-H building. They're an all-around go-to group of youth who we can count on to, to really just step up and help out with tasks and lead some, some things at the fair. I also give leadership to the general project areas. So that means, like, at the fair, I'm in the general projects building, and I'm helping with the showcasing and the judging. But also, before we get to the fair, we're looking at giving leadership and supporting the committee to provide project experiences, workshop days, really develop areas and projects and workshops for the kids to learn new things in different areas. I, as Monique mentioned, we both give leadership to the 4-H Federation Board. And then partner programs, that's one of the big things that I do. I do a lot of STEM work and STEM programs with different organizations in the community. So I work with the five school districts through their community ed departments. I also work with the Afro-American Development Association, Cultural Diversity Resources. We've worked with Central University, MSUM, to put on different programs and bring youth to those spaces and just give them a taste of what college might be like, or what they could do in their futures. So that's a big part of my work, is working with those organizations to develop relationships, needs analysis, and provide programming that fits with their audiences. And then specific to project development committees, again, working with the STEM programs, working with our general projects committee, and then the fundraising aspects of the Federation.
Thank you. Any questions for the YD team before we move on?
Mr. Chair, if I could, I just wanted to note that I was a former 4-H person, Walls Boosters, Travis County. It's my first opportunity in leadership.
More than twenty years ago.
Yeah, over twenty years ago. But one of the things that I wanted to bring up is, pre-COVID, while they're not ambassadors, at different times, you brought leaders, I think right after the fair, to, to talk about some of the things that they did. And I think that it was extremely impactful, and that group that you would bring in would be extremely impressive on, on the things that they were doing, and, and kind of supports what you're sharing with us today. And so if that's anything that you would be willing to consider, you had advocates to do that in 4-H, I think that'd be great.
It'd be awesome.
Thank you. Well-documented, being a champion for what you do, so thank you. But I, part of the issue that I think we need to continue to work on as we look at opportunities and seek how we can streamline processes and work better together, I, I really think that, and I know you've reached out to the Fair Board on a few different things, but given this board gives money to the Fair Board, as well as the Extension Office, I just want to encourage you to allow us to help, help bridge that divide in terms of how we work together during the fair, but also during the planning coming up. I know you'd gone to a meeting, I think, a month ago. And if there's any way that we can help have smaller meetings to work through schedules and, and that component, to help seamlessly do that, I would be willing to help with that. I think the Extension Committee can also be part of maybe a, a joint meeting going outside of, well, how are- well, how our normal meeting schedule goes to work with the fair board, see what the fair board's hopes and dreams are for the partnership, as well as our hopes and dreams for the partnership, I think would be really helpful.
I will take all the help I can get. I was at a fair board meeting last night and I, I cried on the way home. Quite frankly, it's, I don't want to talk about it right now.
Yeah. But know that.
It was very uncomfortable for me.
Well, I, I mean, and I, I think that there are probably just, I, I think that, that unpacking it would probably be more simpler if we're all in the room together and um, understanding that there are ways of doing things that sometimes there's just ingrained things that we don't want to go outside of it, however, whatever that is. You know, and I think that as somebody who I said earlier, is probably too involved with all facets of 4H, from being a club leader, a 4H mom, to be in the state extension chair. I think there are some ways we can work this out and figure it out. So um, certainly reach out to me and we'll.
I'll do that. I appreciate it. I, I know that we have the same goals. We just have very different ideas of how to get there.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I might go to more the broader, broader piece of 4H. I know that extension thrives on the numbers. There are researchers, there are university-driven researchers and you constantly see the numbers and the numbers look good and they're increasing and I appreciate that. Where, where I try to break it apart, and I think for this board, probably when we talk about new 4Hers, a lot of times those aren't, those aren't the classic, we're not increasing club membership by that amount. What we're, we're having more interactions with kids in the after-school programs, those day camps, those are all included in the numbers. And so I, I think it gives a broader ask, or broader vision of what 4H is doing in our community and statewide is to really understand there are some great specialty clubs that we have. And it all in, adds to the vibrancy of the club experience. But then I, I want to take it a step further and figure out how we take these, these new 4Hers and these specialty clubs. And I don't know what the number was, 2,000 or 1,500 that we had showcase participation that you gave? I was trying to write down numbers, but how do we take that from X amount of multi-thousand in Clay County to allow them to have a stage to showcase what they're working on as well? So I think we can continue to work on how we do that. Uh, I think that's the, the critical question that we all, all face is how we do that. But I think what our administrative, administrator Larson said is, is a big part of it. That was always really great when we had um, those robotics kids came in one time and we had a STEM presentation one time. And so often this board has to deal with mitigating the really troubling things that we're seeing in our community and, and young people. And I want to make sure we're giving a voice to kids that are doing really great things as well.
Thank you. We would love to bring in the robotics kids at some point in time and have that done. But yeah, and I just wanted to say that um, through our after-school programs and our community partner programs, we don't often see a lot of them coming to the fair. Their representation at the fair is more posters and reports and things that we post so that people can see that. But within all of the programs that we do, we make sure that they do have a smaller showcase experience, whether it's providing that to their peers within the room or inviting family members in to see those um, showcase experiences. But we do give them that opportunity, even if they're not able to bring it to the fair.
Hi, I'm Jill Patri. I'm the new Horticulture Extension Educator. Since beginning my role in extension on January 8th, I have been focusing on connecting with communities in Clay County. I've learned about current and past community education programs and connected with Clay County Master Gardeners. I have been exploring ways to bring horticulture education to Clay County through Clay County Master Gardener Projects and Outreach Events. I'm looking forward to making more community connections and collaborating with extension colleagues, organizations and groups in the community to bring horticulture education to Clay County. A few goals for me this year is facilitating outreach and education opportunities for Clay County Extension and Clay County Master Gardeners. That will increase visibility for both programs in Clay County. An increased interest and membership in the Clay County Master Gardener Volunteer Program through community outreach and educational events. This year we do have five new interns, so that's exciting to mentor them through the program this year. We are also starting up a garden tour for Clay County Master Gardeners that will be in July. So look for more details on that if you're interested in touring six Clay County gardens. Um, and then we are working on a plant sale as well to raise some funds for our Master Gardener Group. We have a few events planned so far in the community, gardening 101, Learn the Basics. Right now we have one in Moorhead, Holly and Dilworth scheduled. Um, we are working on a few workshops too. We'll be partnering with Moorhead City Forester Trent Wise and doing an Emerald Ash Borer Workshop. So that will be really great for the community to learn about what Moorhead is doing and what they can do personally on their property for treatment options. We are also doing a Resilient Yard series, um, kind of combined with River Keepers on a rain garden how-to workshop in April through Community Ed. And then we're offering a Master Gardener Continuing Ed program here in April too. So um, we will also be attending the Yard and Garden Palooza over in Fargo with a booth to do some tabling events and then I'll be presenting there as well. So we've got some fun things coming up so far and I'll continue to keep working on projects. Thank you.
You currently have five interns?
Yes.
Has there been a problem in the past with retaining people past the first year? Do you have any plans to try and keep people engaged?
I think the big thing, at least from my feedback from the Master Gardener Group, was having more opportunities to educate the community rather than doing a lot of manual labor workshops. So I think, or maintaining gardens is part of it. But I think just increasing the awareness and giving them more opportunities to do education in the community will give them more investment in the program and hoping that that makes them want to stay and continue creating new curriculum and being one of those outreach members in the community.
I know recruiting has been difficult for members of Master Gardening because it, there's been an expectation that they recruit, that the volunteers recruit, are in charge of recruiting and get, reaching out to get people. You've got a program across river that has more applicants than they have positions. And uh, full disclosure, my wife was a Master Gardener for a number of years. And there are some things that we really would like to see. And a little bit of focus and a little bit of energy and time put into making this program great. We, we benefit on this campus from the work of Master Gardeners. And there's projects around the city and the county that I, I'm aware of that uh, my wife's worked on and the other Master Gardeners, they do great work. And I really hope they'll get the support from the extension that the program deserves.
Yes, yep. I'm very committed to supporting them and helping them with anything that they need. I'm here as a resource and also as an idea generator too. So definitely.
Thank you.
First time I'm in front of you for, you know, from a long, long time. So I'm actually the one who's been here the longest with extension in Clay County. It's a health and wellness coordinator. And uh, I've always had the uh, the pleasure to work in and out in the community and doing the outreach that is much necessary for our SNAP ed and also for low-income families in our community. We're seem to be reaching out a more uh, different and a more diverse population in our community. And we're looking forward to establishing new programs so we'll be able to accomplish their needs in our community. Some of you may be aware that we are in the community and we offer health and wellness, you know, different curriculums to the majority of the families that we are able to recruit. After COVID, it's been pretty hard to get people back together. But slowly and surely, you know, we are making those opportunities more available. So we're, we're actually going to them instead of asking them to come to us. So uh, doing the outreach in, in their homes if, if at all possible, doing, you know, classes. I even had to utilize our own office here locally, you know, to uh, do a Cooking Matters class that is much needed, you know, and that uh, our families really enjoy being participants of. Uh, one of my biggest projects right now is, is the Super Shelf Transformation, you know, in the area. As a matter of fact, we're kind of excited because on Wednesday we're supposed to get certified. So meaning that, you know, if on a food pantry, it'll be more like a grocery store, you know, opportunity for families to be able to come and uh, select, you know, based on uh, what's available of all the donations uh, that have been coming into the food pantry. We serve approximately more than 1,600 families in uh, in a month. The majority is the very diverse population that we are reaching out to. We make it uh, available to everyone and anyone who is, who is in need of, uh, you know, a little extra food on the table. As you all know, prices for food has skyrocketed. So uh, with that said, you know, uh, we also offer more than 30 different curriculums. We, when we go out and recruit, recruit, we are able to, I'm able to analyze which is the best curriculum to really teach with those, with those families or, or those youth. Uh, the other thing that I am also focusing in for the, for this summer will be uh, the community gardens in Pelican Rapids, gardening in a box, Cooking Matters, Cooking is a Snap. And also uh, one of the biggest projects that I would like to reach out is the farmers markets where we can offer pop for the youth and pop for the seniors. So um, it is a great opportunity to really, you know, enjoy what's out there, you know, in the summer. I'm really want to focus more on the population in Pelican Rapids because that community seems to be really growing. Uh, so I'm working with Master Gardeners there in, you know, with the 16 or the 26 community gardens that they have there. And we're also going to offer Cooking Matters at the grocery store and also boot camp, you know, classes. So they'll be able to learn more how to budget and also how to be able to sustain, you know, within, within a monthly budget, you know, with their families. Collaborating, you know, with the majority of our leaders here at 4H, hoping that we can also, you know, uh, reach out the youth of our families, you know, who have never been involved with 4H and hopefully in the future that would be a big plus. You know, uh, not only for the families but for the community. So uh, I've got different, I'm, I'm the kind of paper, person that likes to give papers out. So I have all kinds of information here if you're interested in learning about any of our programming. And of course, uh, also uh, wanted to also welcome you to refer to us, you know, or to me or to our office, any families or any organizations that you might feel would benefit from our program. Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell.
Rosie, it's good to see you again.
Nice seeing you, Kevin.
Yeah. So have you, have you had any um, dialogue with these, these folks that are working on this cultural mall? Are you familiar with that?
I, I'm familiar with it, but I, I have no direct, you know, um, connection with any of them.
I know there was a, there was a presentation given to this board and this board supported the efforts going on for, for that proposal that would be in Moorhead. And I, you know, and I think when it comes to, you know, your involvement with nutrition, food and those types of things, one of their goals is to have many different ethnic types of foods within this cultural mall. And I, I just think that maybe having um, maybe some backing from extension regarding uh, what they're looking at wanting to do might help in, in also accomplishing that goal. And I, I know Rosie, you've been involved, I, I know you're, it's a little bit different in, in what your work is. But, but I, I think the ability to um, be able to promote those different.
And I certainly will because we have a lot of new, small, you know, businesses that are, that are being, you know, settling in our community and a lot of them are diverse. And uh, being aware and, and my passion working in the community has always been getting all the resources that we can to families that are, really want to be involved. So that in itself is, is a big plus. I've been here for a long time, so it's very rare that I don't know what's going on because, you know, word of mouth, church organizations and stuff like this. So uh, I really promote anything that is, you know, new. And uh, if I can get people to, you know, be involved, I certainly am available to do that.
Sure. I, I guess I would encourage, you know, all of extension maybe to look at, at that as well. And, and I, because I think there's really opportunities there. And I think when you talk about local agriculture from, from raising food from the ground up and bringing it uh, from producer to local markets, uh, I, I think this is a good opportunity. And I think that's kind of what the cultural mall intends to do as well.
And I, I, I heard, uh, you know, that there are some uh, new, like uh, the new development association.
Yes.
There's also going to be a Haitian families, family, families selling in our community. And uh, the African-American families that are also settling in the Fargo-Moorhead area. They're also bringing in a lot of new ideas. And they, they do have a lot of plans to really, you know, expand and explore. But the fact is that it's the budget that they're not, you know, that they don't have. So, and they have to learn what the policy is in our community because they're not used to so many things happening before they can really establish a, you know, a business or, or an organization. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, to speak to your point, we do have resources within our um, community civic engagement, an area called Resilient Communities. So looking at who's selling your communities and what projects or economic opportunities are um, present in the community. So as you're talking, I'm just hearing an opportunity to connect those folks to our center of community vitality so that they can kind of help them uh, figure out ways to build an economy for their businesses that you're doing, but also supporting them um, in that way.
Well, maybe, maybe if I could, Mr. Chair and, and Steve and Jackie, maybe if we could uh, submit the names of the folks who are involved with this cultural mall, maybe send them to Cecilia's way and, and uh, maybe to Rosie and, and then maybe you can kind of.
Do you have Fauzia's information? Fauzia Di.
Not sure who that is.
Yeah, I think that might, that might be good. And then maybe to reach out and see, maybe learn a little bit more about what, what they're doing and what their intentions are and how you could help them in that regard.
I'll be in contact with you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, great comments, Commissioner Campbell, couldn't agree more. Ginny and I can help with that connection. Ginny, I, right, or both. And then I have one more question about um, Super Shelf. Just a little, now that, that was a grant, was it not? $60,000 grant or something, or am I thinking of something else?
Actually, I'm not very familiar with the, the whole funding uh, resources there because it is Darryl that is in, in charge of the Place for Hope project. I, I do know that he has written, you know, quite a few grants. He has received some from the uh, different um, you know, um, programs that he, he works with.
Okay.
I'm not familiar with where he gets his grants other than what I'm, what I can tell you is that the majority of my programming has not, in the last year, has not spent much of our budget. And that's because most of my agencies or our agencies are contributing for the implementation of the class. So our budget is, is being stable.
Okay. Yeah, and the reason I brought up, I knew Darryl, or Place for Hope was working toward that. But when you mentioned, I, and I know you work in a broader area, I didn't know if you were being specific to Moorhead or, you know, other communities where the, that Super Shelf is going on.
There's quite a few Super Shelves projects throughout north, the north west region.
Yeah, okay.
And we're also working on a, on a second project locally, but it takes three years.
Yeah.
You know, the process is kind of, kind of long. But hopefully on Thursday, we can say we have a Super Shelf. And they also are looking for a new location, hopefully some land where they can build and be able to also apply for other, other grants that can help establish a, you know, a building for this, this new project.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner.
Super Shelf is really a, a term that people are using to really um, talk about this new way of shopping for food for low-income family. So it's not really a program. So um, food shelves will have to seek for funding for, for the meals or the posters in there. But like statewide health improvement partnership has been part of that process as well with posting and posters and different things for that shelf. It's a model that um, food shelves can adopt. So.
Mr. Mojo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Kravina, I was going to mention, part of the benefit to having Janice now on that extension committee is because of her work. She serves on the board with a Place for Hope, but also is very well aware of the super shelf component. And so much of the time, I, I think it's not about reinventing the wheel, it's about making the connections so that the, the programs can all work together and benefit from each other. And I think this is a perfect example.
One exciting thing that we also have come in, in Clay County is another counterpart to Rosie's position that will be housed in the regional office. It will be really serving the Arabic and Kurdish community in the area of Hefei Eden with new immigrants coming into the community. So that individual will be housed out of the regional office, but will be serving Clay County and Becca County in the same capacity as Rosie, but with different cultural groups. We had interviews yesterday and we're really excited to see what we get for, for the candidate. As you can see, we're making a lot of great impact in the community with the work that everybody has shared with you. So we are just thankful for your continued support and we hope that we can come back to you in the next year with much more robust programming. Maybe we've made some additional connections that we've talked about here and how that will further expand the work that we're doing in the community. So that concludes our time here. Thank you so much for having us this morning.
Any other questions?
Just one last thing. I know Commissioner Mojo mentioned about being an extension with my son. That goes back a little bit of time, but Rosie, that goes back to you too. And I just have to say that my son, you were one of my son's favorites.
Oh.
Involved in extensions.
Well, I work with, you know, I also work with Steve, and all the kids that I've worked with, you know, I kind of adopted them all. You know, they walk around the facility this year, they say, oh, here's a food lady. You know, but it has been a pleasure, you know, working with all the youth that I have. You know, it's, it's just one of those things that is, is pleasant to have as memories. And I'd like to share that it seems like this year will be my last year with extension. And Steve, you always ask me, Quinn, well, maybe, you know, this might be the year. I'm, I'm still working on it. I, I have to really, you know, let myself go, you know, say, you know, it's okay, you know, it's going to be okay. But I've worked for 46 years, you know, so I'm just, it's been kind of hard to get to that point. We'll see what happens.
One thing I, one thing I've noticed about everybody that retires, they seem to walk around with a smile on their face. So it's, you know, it might, might not be so bad.
It might not be so bad.
One thing extension is really great about is a volunteer recruitment, Rosie. So be careful what you wish for, they might snag you into that.
I thought of that, you know, but I, I feel like it's time to really get back to my family in Texas. You know, it's, it's, there's a lot of things happening. In the last year, I lost four brothers. And that tells me that it's, you know, family should be first. They should come first. And I have three grandchildren that, you know, are pushing me to say, Quinn, and come on, this and that. And I say, okay, we'll see what happens this year. So let's see what happens this year. Okay, guys? I'm not, I'm not, I'm sending in my resignation yet, but I want that well-known, Cecilia. But yeah, I, I really miss working with the youth over at detention center. Things are different now, you know, now I, I just do, you know, different projects there. I'm, I'm really hoping to do gardening of boys there, you know, with, with youth there because most of them are in school and then after school, they're working. So the only time I can work with them will be a Saturday or a Sunday or a special pride.
Once you learn how to retire, let me know how to do it.
Thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Look forward to seeing you next year, Rosie.
More unlikely, Dave. Can't promise that, though.
Thank you so much to all of you.
I do have to mention, that's a good report on, on the update of 4H and stuff like that.
Okay, we have got Kimberly Savage, our recorder, and she has got her annual report plus a number, since she's very organized, we get everything at once, a number of asks.
Thank you for having me here today. I have my annual department update to give to you. I'll start off with our mission statement. The Recorder's Office mission is to promptly record, file, and preserve documents accurately in an efficient, responsible, and professional manner for prosperity and legal purposes. The different responsibilities in our office, we do real estate recording, birth and death record, marriage license and certificates, marriage efficient registration, notary public registration, and the recording of state and federal tax liens. I have three people in my office. Along with me, I have one chief deputy recorder and two deputy recorders. In 2023, we saw a little bit of a decrease in our number of recorded documents compared to past years. In 2020 and 2021, we saw a huge increase, so we're kind of leveling out from that a little bit. One of the big things that happened in 2023 for real estate recording is that we took over the collection of state and deed, state deed and mortgage registration tax from our treasurer's office. This kind of streamlined the process for the customer when they come to the counter. They pay all the fees at the recorder's office. And when people are sending in documents to us for recording, they send all of the fees to us and we issue one receipt. So it kind of streamlined the process, which is kind of nice. I know I've mentioned this before, but I want to mention again, our, our office does offer a service called Property Fraud Alert. It's a free online service that's offered to the public that allows them to have their name monitored within our office. It doesn't stop the document from being recorded, but allows them to act sooner if something does get recorded on their, on their name that shouldn't. New to the service this year is now that the notification can be made by a text too. So you can go to that link on there or you can stop by our office and any of our staff can help people sign up for that. For vital records for birth certificates, we are able to issue birth certificates for anyone born within the borders of Minnesota. They need to be an authorized requestor, have a valid ID, and the fee is $26. They can walk into our office and within 10 minutes, walk out with their certified birth certificate if we have all the proper documentation. Same for death records. We can issue death certificates for anybody who passed away within the borders of Minnesota Another document that we currently issue frequently is marriage certificates. So we can issue certified copies for couples that applied for their license in Clay County. If they applied in another county, they do unfortunately have to get that certificate from that county. We do have a statewide index, moms.mn.gov, that can assist the public in searching where that marriage record is. And then the marriage license, couples can apply at the Clay County Government Center. It's valid for six months and has to be used within the borders of Minnesota. And marriage efficient registration, we did have one new legislation change in 2023 that I wanted to mention. It made a change where anybody who's over the age of 21 can just come in and register as a marriage efficient. It used to be you had to have some sort of a credential, so many people would go online and get ordained. That is no longer necessary. They can just come into our office, as long as they're over 21 and have their ID, they can become registered to perform weddings. They will still accept those credentials if they do go online and want to be filed as a minister. Yeah. 2023, we issued 556 marriage licenses. Summer and fall continue to be our busiest times in the Recorder's Office between marriage license applications and recording of real estate documents. I'd like to thank my staff. We have been slower, but we have accomplished a lot of stuff in our downtime that is going to improve efficiency and customer service in our office for many years. So we have been getting a lot of projects tackled and getting that done, which is nice. That completes my update for today. Do you guys have any questions for my office update?
Yes, Frank.
Do you have any, have you had any people that come in and register as a, I don't know, minister or whatever to get a license to perform marriages?
Yeah, we get pretty regularly. We have over 200 people a year that typically come in and file to perform weddings.
Anybody can do it now, huh?
Anybody can do it.
Hey, I'm in.
Looks like it.
Well, you need to be at least 20...
You got a retirement job.
I don't know.
You could build a wedding chapel in Dilworth.
What do they charge for that?
The fee is $40.
Just to get the license?
Well, that's to, for the marriage efficient registration is $40. The license is $115 to get married.
So to perform the marriage, you'd get some more money then, huh?
Mm-hmm. You only have to register once.
Looks like a good part-time job.
There you go.
That must take pressure off the justice and the peace.
Sounds like a lot of weekend work, though. I don't know.
I'm sorry, what was that?
It must take pressure off the justice and the peace.
I think it does because it allows more people the opportunity to perform the ceremony.
And then I'm curious about that, when they, they're eligible for that or did the requirements filed? Then with that, are there criteria then, I'm assuming that they have to follow for state law to, for registering that marriage or that certificate?
Yeah, there is statutes in place for marriage efficient, for marriage efficient, what they need to do, what they're required to do by statute, to perform the ceremony, to view IDs, to make sure that the people there are who they say they are. And then yes, to get the certificate back to us after the wedding has been, happened.
In the instance where you're issuing the marriage efficient, that, that takes your staff time to explain all this to people that have not had any formal training?
Yeah, it does, does take a little bit more time to do the explaining of it, which is why I came last year and asked for that fee increase. Just a lot of confusion around it right now.
Any other questions for Kim on the report? Well, you've got your next item.
Okay.
Which is request approval of expenses for Land Records Department.
Yeah, this comes, our compliance meeting met earlier this year. The Recorder's Office was 100% compliant in 2023. That means that we had our documents returned to our simisters within the time allowed in statute. So with that, we are proposing for the 2025 budget to use $15,000 for tax system maintenance, $40,000 for our remonumentation program, $37,350 for information services, and $12,650 for our Assessor software maintenance. That brings it to a total of $105,000. That has been consistent with what we've done for the past number of years. So today I would be looking for a motion to approve that $105,000 in expenses for the Land Records Departments for the 2025 budget.
That's included in your budget, isn't it?
The compliance fund is kind of separate.
Yeah, it's sort of out there, but the funding is available within the compliance.
Yes, yes, it is.
But, but the dollars that are recommended being, to be used, go towards offsetting of those expenses within the 2025 budget.
Yes, so it lowers the levy essentially then.
Lowers the levy, that's right.
Yep, because those items are budgeted within those departments, but then this money goes towards that, so it lowers the levy ultimately.
So it does have an impact on the budget, a positive impact.
Any, any questions for Kim on this?
What, what balance remains after you...
Just under $100,000.
And has that been pretty consistent?
Yeah, I like to keep it around that. The point of the compliance fund is for us to be compliant. So if we become non-compliant, we would need to probably hire a staff person to become compliant. So I'd like to keep about $100,000 in there so that if I need to hire a staff person, I kind of have those expenses available and can get that approved right away, hoping anyway.
Do we need a motion on this?
Yes, we would, yes.
Also move.
Second.
We have motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
We've got request for approval to hire deputy recorder.
I recently had a resignation within my office, so I would just be looking for approval to hire a deputy recorder within the Recorder's Office. This position is already accounted for in the 2024 budget.
The size of your, your staff, I'm assuming you don't, won't be anything internal, you won't need backfill?
No, there would be no backfill.
Okay.
Move approval. Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Next up, request for approval for out-of-state travel.
I guess I would be looking for permission to travel to Iowa for an educational symposium put on by our technology vendor. It would be in May. So I would just be looking for approval for that travel.
Iowa's a pretty hot spot in May.
Yeah.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Have motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. And lastly, request approval for marriage ceremony fee.
Yeah, so with the new legislation that passed last year, now that anybody is able to perform marriages, I am looking and exploring the idea of being, holding marriage ceremonies at the Clay County Government Center, allowing that service for people who maybe don't have time to wait for the judges. Sometimes the judges, you can get in right away, but sometimes it's, you know, a two-to-three week, two-to-three-month wait. It just depends on their schedule and what they have allotted. So I'm kind of looking to fill that gap for those people that may need to have that ceremony right away and have proof of that marriage. So we'd be proposing that we would be holding them at the Clay County Government Center in the public area. I would be looking for a fee of $150 to be approved today for that fee.
Commissioner Mojo. Thank you. I have a question in regards to scheduling that. Is that something that you can just walk in and do? How do you allocate the time?
So the, the reason why I wanted to do it is because there was a gap of time between when they could apply and when they could actually get in to see the judge. So in the beginning, because we're not sure how this is going to quite work out, we would only schedule out two weeks in advance. Currently, it would just be me in my office that would be performing the ceremonies. And so it would just be scheduling around my schedule, I guess.
So in terms of credentials, not for you, but for, I mean, what does a couple need to provide in terms of documentation for this?
So they would have to apply for a license, which they would need valid government-issued photo ID and the fee for that. And then at the ceremony, there would be a need for two witnesses, age 16 and over, that have ID, and then they would need to have their ID as well.
Any other questions for Kim?
I do. So when you would perform these and having them in that public space, like how many people show up for these things?
Well, I have policies that I'm going to be putting in place for it, office policies. I'm going to only allow six people in there plus the two people getting married. So it would be eight people limited.
And you have a spot in mind?
Yeah, there's a west meeting room that's open to the public and that would fit in there.
Sure, sure. Okay.
And so anybody, if I can, so anybody then going to, Commissioner Krav, so anybody who would be applying for that service to be done at the government center would know that there's some restrictions to occupancy, right?
Yes, yep. They would be aware of the policies and, because I would want them to read through all of that.
And I, and I think that's important to note because that public area there, we do have other things going on, other windows for other departments. And I just, just so that we wouldn't get to where we could be having some interference with what else might be going on within that facility.
Right. And at the government center, we all share a calendar for that west meeting room too. So it's like I can see if planning has something going on or if it's being reserved for elections or something like that. That will all be factored into the availability.
And then, and then, you know, one of the things that I always ask when we, when we're establishing a fee, you know, I'm hoping that the intention isn't that we make money on this fee, but it covers the costs. And is, are you, are you confident that that's what that would do?
I, I believe so. This is kind of where I want to start, and if I feel I need to adjust it, I will come back. You know, there's been a lot of time and effort put into developing policies and procedures and how would we do this and things like that. So I do think it will, but if I feel that it doesn't, I will come back and ask for an increase.
As I recall in our conversation about this, you have run this by the judges and they see it as a, as a resource that would be helpful.
Yes, I've ran it past, talked with Renella, she ran it past the judges, they were all okay with that. I've ran it past Mike Leeser in the attorney's office with our policies, procedures, and what the ceremony would consist of and has approval of all of that.
Any other questions? I'd entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve the proposed fee.
Second. Motion, second. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Justin Soram, our county engineer, annual department update on the highway department.
Yes, good morning. So I'm here for my annual update. So I'll first start out with the mission statement for the highway department. So the main objective of the Clay County Highway Department is the construction and maintenance of county highways, bridges, county state aid highways and bridges, and township roads and bridges. The goal of the highway department is to ensure that the roadways and bridge structures in Clay County are designed according to federal and state guidelines, constructed according to the contract specifications, and properly maintained to ensure the safety of the traveling public. So first is my highway department org chart. So in two thousand and twenty-four, with your support, we were able to add two full-time maintenance workers. So what this kind of does is during a snow event, we have eleven motor grader operators and eleven maintenance workers who drive plow trucks. So this allows, when we are fully staffed, that we do not have to have any part-time drivers. And as I have said in the past, CDLs are not easy to get now, and it's even harder to find people. And of course, the first winter that we are fully staffed, we really haven't had any snow events where we've had to utilize everybody, thankfully. But we do know in the future, especially this fall, we're going to have some retirements coming up. So what we're kind of trying to do this summer is going to be training some people that we think will be taking over in motor grader positions and just trying to, when those retirements do come, that there's not a lapse in coverage. So what we do on the maintenance side comprises of twenty-three full-time employees. We do maintenance on county gravel and twenty-seven out of the thirty townships. So it is comprised of eleven districts, averaging over one hundred and thirty miles per district. We currently do seven hundred and forty-nine point five miles of township maintenance. So like I had mentioned, we do snow plowing, ditch mowing, culvert replacement, patching and crack filling, annual graveling. And then this past year, we actually were able to install GPS software in all of our plow trucks. So during a snow event, we can see a live view of everything that has been plowed, stuff that has yet to be plowed, and just kind of keeping an overall view of everything. And then we did also install three cameras. So in the event of a snow event, we can share real-time feeds, just kind of showing what it's like out in the open country because obviously in town, it's a lot different. In the shop, so there's two employees, they're in charge of fleet maintenance of twelve motor graders, thirteen tandem trucks, five tractors, two payloaders, twenty-five pickups and SUVs, and all sorts of different equipment. So they they do a lot of fabrication in-house, they're really good at fixing things and fabbing things. And they also help with equipment purchasing. In the past, we've had some issues with wiring harnesses in our trucks, and we have gone a different route with a different brand of truck. And then this past year, we actually were able to purchase a new software to help diagnose and troubleshoot breakdowns because we try to fix everything in-house that we can. On the engineering side, it's made up of five technicians, two summertime interns. And their main kind of thing that they do in the summertime is construction inspection. So they're, when a project's going on, they're out there all the time. So during a paving project, they're they're there from sunup to sundown and oftentimes later than that, completing journals and just tracking materials. They're also in charge of access permits, utility permits, plan design under my direction and the assistant engineer's direction, and then also bridge inspection. So we are in charge of all county bridges and all township bridges. So that's in total three hundred and thirty-five bridges. We have one program administrator, which is myself, two team leaders, and one assistant inspector. On the administration side, it is made up of one registered engineer, one assistant engineer, highway accountant, and two front office staff. So front office staff handles all the different moving permits, annual permits that come in, dust control, county graveling, advertising for bids, joint facility admin, and handling all of the different phone calls that come in. And our highway accountant Ann does a tremendous job. She's in charge of a lot of different things. Sign department, so this is made up of one full-time sign foreman and one of the maintenance positions that we were at in the past. We had a part-time sign assistant that would help in the summertime. We had trouble filling that position, so in the summertime, one of the full-time maintenance workers helps out the sign department. So we're in charge of the maintenance of eight thousand three hundred and twenty-nine signs. With the two sign guys, we have actually been taking on more township signing than we have in the past. When requests come in, we try to work with the townships and help them if we can. They're also in charge of sign management software to ensure MUTCD compliance. So this is something that we're looking to switch this year. We use a program called Simple Signs. There is a new add-on in GIS, so we are working with Mark and Mandy and trying to implement all the data we have in Simple Signs into a new software. They also do traffic control for all of our pavement testing. And then a couple of years ago, we did purchase two portable message boards. So we use it for to warn the public of construction that's coming up. We've used it for the bike marathon in the past. We use it for the steam threshers just to warn people. And then they're also in charge of mailbox repair during snow events. Obviously, mailbox get mailboxes get hit and then also in charge of any road closures that come up. Just an overall view of our roadway network. So it's made up of county state aid highways, in which we have four hundred and four miles, two hundred and seventy-two of which are paved, one hundred and thirty-two gravel. And then county roads, we have three hundred and thirty-seven miles, sixteen of them being paved, three hundred and twenty-one of them being gravel. Some maintenance highlights from two thousand and twenty-three. So we did complete two thousand six hundred and eighteen hours of snow removal, four thousand four hundred and forty-eight hours of blading gravel roads, little over four hundred and eighty thousand dollars in fuel expenditures, five miles of crack filling. We did purchase a new mastic machine last year, and we did go through two semi-loads of this material, material which is used for patching potholes and different things. The CDL license program has been a really, really good thing for us. This past year, one new employee utilized this program, and we currently have one person enrolled in it right now. We were able to purchase a new mastic machine, like I had mentioned. We did order two new plow trucks, which should be arriving sometime this spring. And then we did purchase a new loader-mounted snow blower. On the construction side, some highlights from two thousand and twenty-three. We did thirteen and a half miles of overlays, four bridge replacements with box culverts, did a lot of different preliminary surveys for two thousand and twenty-four construction. We completed one hundred and forty-four bridge inspections and then also designed for two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five construction projects. I did want to just highlight a couple of projects that we did last year. So the Kasah eighteen cold-in-place recycling project. This was on Kasah eighteen from Trunk Highway nine to just west of the Buffalo River. This was the first CIR project in Clay County, and a lot of testing and background work went into making this a successful project. So CIR utilizes the in-place bituminous pavement. It grinds it up, and then it is injected with an engineered emulsion, then laid back out with a paver. So this cures for seven to fourteen days, and then an overlay is placed on top. So we did receive an eight hundred thousand dollar grant from LRIP to create a ten-ton connected roadway from Trunk Highway nine to Kasah three in Moorhead. So I think CIR is something we will likely utilize in the future, but it's something that we're going to study, see how this one performs, and just making sure that it's a good thing for the county.
Is that a one one application or is it, if you put the product in, it lays it down immediately?
So the machine on the right side is the machine that grinds it up. A conveyor takes it into the next machine in which the emulsion is injected into it, and then it lays it out in a windrow. And then a paver comes behind that, and it's so it is all cold, so it's not hot asphalt, it's just cold. So a paver lays it back out, and then it cures for seven to fourteen days. It is a pretty neat process.
How much, I'm just curious, how much time, extra time is that road closed compared to a normal process?
So I would say from a normal mill and overlay, it's probably seven to fourteen days. But on an overall grading project, if this is, so you utilize this process when it's it's not a candidate for a mill and overlay because the cracking pattern is too much or there's more damage to the road. But you don't want to all outgrade the road either. So I would say from a mill and overlay, it's definitely closed longer. But from a grading project, this was done in less, about a month, whereas a grading project would have been three to four. Another project that we were able to complete in two thousand and twenty-three was the first of three years of a mill and overlay project on Kasah twenty-six. So we did about seven and a half miles. So one thing that we did differently on this project than we've ever done is utilizing a level-five asphalt due to the heavy truck traffic and rutting. So throughout our pavement testing, this is what we were able to come up with, with the geotechnical engineers being the best asphalt design for this road. And then obviously, next year, we are doing, or this year, we're doing year two. We did experience spring flooding in two thousand and twenty-three. This was a FEMA-eligible event, so I did list out the different categories and how much damage was incurred. So we had a hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and two cents in road and bridge repair, little over fifteen thousand dollars in debris removal, and then fifty-seven thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars and fifteen cents in emergency protective measures. So that's closing roads, putting out barricades. New construction in two thousand and twenty-three, this is the Yulin shop. And then we also completed a salt shed in partnership with Moorhead and MinDOT at the joint facility. One thing I do like to show every year is our historical state aid allotment. So and this is for construction. So in two thousand and twenty-four, we received four million three hundred and seventy-six dollar, three hundred and seventy-six thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars. This was up about five point nine percent from two thousand and twenty-three. And it, the early projections that we're getting for next year does look like it's going up about the same again. So hopefully, that trends in that direction. And then I did want to highlight all the different grant applications that we completed in the past year and some of the successes that we've had. I do appreciate the support from this board to go after these grants and trying to be as aggressive as possible. So one Kasah twelve and Kasah fifty-two intersection. So we applied for a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant, and were awarded seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We did apply for a protect application for the Kasah Lemon Diamond Grind and Joint Sealing. So that's the road that the past two summers have had pop-outs, and we've had to close it for extended periods of time. That's, we believe, is, part of the reason is the joints aren't sealed on that project. So we were awarded five hundred and thirty-nine thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars for that project. With the bonding bill last year, we did have quite a few projects shelf-ready and ready to bid out. So we were awarded one million two hundred and fourteen thousand dollar, two hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars in bridge bonding. And then the local road improvement program, we did apply for two separate grants there, and those are going to be announced at the end of March. And then just to look ahead at two thousand and twenty-four. So we have bid out the Kasah twenty-one paving and the Kasah twenty-six paving. We are doing three box culvert replacements, which bid next Tuesday. The Eleventh Street Underpass project, which has a groundbreaking this Saturday. We are going to be doing pavement testing on future future projects and then pavement management to help utilize the MinDOT data that we receive every two years, as well as a five-year plan update. And then with new sign policies, and we were able to purchase a retro reflectometer a couple of years ago, we are looking to update our sign sign department policy just at when we replace certain signs. There is, and then through FHWA, there is some major changes coming to the bridge inspection. So on the hundred and hundred-plus bridges that we have to inspect this year, it's going to take considerably more time to add the different elements that we have to add. And then we are looking at some new equipment purchases and also looking into the lease program. Any questions for me?
Comment for me. Having lived in the city of Moorhead my entire time here, it wasn't until I got on this commission that I was aware of the vast amount of work your department does. And you do it well, and we saw that at township meeting yesterday. You are aware of the the roads in this county, and you're able to communicate with the township officials in a very productive way. And it reflects well on on the county, and we're grateful to you and your your staff for the job they do.
Thank you.
Any, yes, Paul?
Yeah, and I just want to thank you again, Justin. Your responses to people are just exceptional. They're quick. It's easy for us when we get a call to be able to call you and you respond, and it's great. Had a citizen last week again, kind of goes back to that flashing sign up on County Road twenty-two and Eleventh Street, and he was just thrilled that you got it up so quick. But and just the response out to that, I don't know how many more of those flashers you're going to get, but I know they're they're a hit. And when we were, when I reached out to you on that, you told me how these, the flat, maybe you give it the difference between the flashing stop sign and the flasher you put on.
Yeah, so the flashing LED stop signs where it's just an LED on the outside of it, those things are in between two and three thousand dollars. There is an actual solar flasher that's round and gets mounted on the top of the sign, and we're able to fabricate a sign post, and then that costs about two hundred dollars. And it, about the same effectiveness.
Well, I, yeah, thank you for that that particular one, too, that Paul talked about. That's, you and I had discussions about that, and and I have gotten some calls from the residents up there, really appreciating that being done, so. And again, I just, as a member of the Highway Tracking Committee, I I get the opportunity, of course, to work a lot with you. And I I think it goes, not only at the Township Officers Meeting, but when we went over the the week before, when we went over with township officers about the annual maintenance contracts, and I think you really presented that in a in a in a positive way. You can al you can always tell when something has been done really good because there were very little to no questions. You you really covered covered it well. And even even though there was a an increase to them, I think they also knew that on the most part, the county still subsidizes them to some degree on on that maintenance. So, yeah, I I want to also thank you for for all those efforts that you do there.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? Justin, passing on to your crew, I know you do.
Yes.
We we are grateful for the job you do.
Thank you for all your support this last year.
Next up, we have Rhonda, Rhonda Porter, Social Services Director, with a request to approve replacement of a child protection specialist due to a resignation. Good morning, Rhonda.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. I am here this morning to request replacement of a child protection specialist who is moving out of the area, unfortunately. She's been with us a couple of years, so we are looking to replace her position. She currently is budgeted on grade eighteen step four. So we do anticipate probably bringing somebody in at that grade eighteen step one, so there may be some savings, although not significant. Now, this is a position that's charged with child protection investigations, as well as family assessments and child welfare work. So we do feel we need this position to continue. And I would request in the motion the ability to backfill, should there be internal interest.
Questions for Rhonda?
Move to approve.
Second the motion.
Have a motion in a second, that does include a backfill?
Yes.
All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Thank you.
Uh, why don't we take a five-minute break? Welcome back. Next up on our agenda will be committee reports. We'll start off with Commissioner Gross.
Again, Tuesday, I went to the Beyond the Yellow, excuse me, Thursday, the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Meeting. As MSU has a Veterans Officer Outreach Director, I was surprised to know that there's 121 veterans that they've got enrolled in their program at the MSU. Just seems like it's a lot of veterans out there utilizing the, the Veteran Services and it's good to hear that. I guess other than that, there's just mostly reports given what, what's happening, going on in each one. Kurt Cannon gave a good report on what the, what is needed. I mean, what is available for all veterans, all, all the different benefit programs, Vietnam Veterans and stuff like that. We also had a report from housing needs for veterans. They've got people working on that. And it's just a lot of Veterans programs. So we've got, I know there's a lot of veterans in Clay County. I just hope they're all aware of the programs that are available. And also want to notify them that the Veteran Service Officer is now located right up here in third floor in the courthouse due to some water problems over there in the other building, I guess. I had to leave the meeting a little bit early, so I hope if there anything else happened, Dave, you can cover that for me. Yesterday, went to the spring township meeting. Again, I want to thank the staff of the Clay County for their, all the reports that they gave. It was really good. I mean, it's just so sharing when they go up there and talk about all the stuff that they're doing for the townships that, that is available. And they all give such good reports. And it was just, just makes you proud to be part of the group here. And thank you very much to the staff here. That's the only two meetings at.
Thank you. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Started out last Tuesday in the afternoon, we had a, another group meeting for the potential PRTF, the bonding resolution that's already in, filed. And a little more discussion, there were some questions as to how to refine it so this bond could potentially move forward a little, a little quicker. Seems that mental health is getting a big lift in the conversation down at the legislature. And if there's a possibility for greater amount of funds that could work possibly toward, you know, this facility, certainly want to try to get ourselves in line. Some design ideas are continuing to be brought forward. And again, we'll have a, a group meeting on this sometime in April, is it, or?
Next, next week.
Oh, next week. Okay. We got one that is in the next week. So we can do a deeper dive in it at that time. The, a lot of the things I, my next meeting was the Clay County Extension Committee. I had that meeting on Wednesday. Wow, a lot was said this morning. So pretty much what I was going to say. I, it was the first time at that meeting, we only meet once a quarter. So it was the first time I just met, met our new committee meeting, you know, other than when we appointed at CIM. You know, today we picked up Janice. That's going to be wonderful. And it was my first time to really speak with our new, our two or new employees who you met today, Monique and Jill. So I, other than that, I think that they re, yeah, and they pretty much went through their goals. A lot of the things that we heard is aboard today. So that's pretty much that one. Later that afternoon, I did, or no, that morning, I had the Cass Kali Food Commission over in the Fargo City Commission Chambers, well attended. I'm just going to read it. March is the food nutrition month. So awareness toward that. And again, the Clay County Partners, which we are, you know, just that mission. And it's to improve all levels of the community food system and ensure that residents have increased access to safe, nutritious, affordable, and culturally based foods. And those conversations, you know, as we talk, whether it's in ways of distribution, education, and, and how do we, the resources that we do have, how are we most efficient with them? So Janice, who we met this morning, did a great, great review of what the work is at, at the Great Plains and on food in our area. This is the highest demand we've had in history. And this data is a little old and it will be upgraded. I think we report later this year, you know, the last report, we had 7.4% of people in Clay County leave, leave, live in food insecurity, which surprised me. Aye. And hopefully we can keep improving on that. One of the ways that we helped with that, which was shown by members of the Hunger Coalition, was called Meal Repack Program. More, Moreh schools is active in that and other places. So they actually, food that isn't used in the cafeteria that day while school's going on, that is repacked and sent home, kids are sent home with a meal. So trying to just, again, for those kids that want that extra meal at home that they may not have, it's a way for them to stay fed and, and comfortable. And then the last thing we had a discussion about, and it's part of Rosie's job, and she mentioned it this morning, how farm markets are, are using SNAP now on a lot of the farm markets, which is wonderful thing that people can use that, that aid and be finding nutritious food. And in many cases at a discount. So that, that was that one. The next day, I was at the Clay SWCD meeting, a couple of highlights of that. They had had their, they at the Capitol, I think all, almost the whole staff and supervisors went for that. They were able to meet all the legislators and talk about their priorities, which is always a funding gap and working toward that. And maybe they'll be able to achieve that over a little period of time. They did get the state aid last year. And as time goes on, maybe they'll be able to touch back into other grants or some of the clean water funds to meet that need. They also brought up the fact, if you remember a few weeks ago, Kevin was in here with Matt and they were talking about the wealth protection grants program that's been applied for. They're waiting for, to see if they'd be getting funding for that. And then also, you know, again, just good use of staff finding grants to do things to save, to do good work and to save our tax dollars locally. So they had bought a 15-foot, foot no-till drill, which they do, I'd say roughly 3,000 acres a year on that throughout the county. And it's a great service that we've been doing, or they've been doing for a number, number of years. So a new 15-foot drill, 15 feet, under grand. And, and just these, this equipment's just getting crazy cost. Anyway, they applied for a soil health financial assistance grant and received 50,000 dollars. So by the end of it, what, the old one, they traded in and the 50, 50 grand they got, it cost, it was about a $10,000 investment upgrade by the, by the soil and water for a new one. So those were the main items on that meeting. Next day, I had the Finance Committee for the Historical and Cultural Society. When, I'm newer to that group and one of our main people in finance is going to be retired from the board. So spending extra time with Marine to, to do deeper dives and understanding the budget and the processes. And we spent well over an hour step by step through it. It was very good. And the big, the main thing is to report to you all that that group is in good financial standing and cash flowing very well. And then I too was part of our Township Officers yesterday. And, and such already is Commissioner Gross stated, I'm, I'm just so impressed. The reports that our, our staff gives to the township, there is, it, it just seems like there's a real coordination between townships and, and the work that Justin does. You know, we mentioned that already today. And for me personally, you know, we have these updates every, you know, we're having them most every week now and they're just wonderful to get those 22, 23 reports. And I, what I liked about yesterday is each department was kind of giving there a little bit. It was like a review of what we had just heard. And I write, I, I'm, I'm visual. If I write it down, I retain it. And it was nice for me to be taking a page or two of notes. So anyway, yeah, thank you to all that were involved with that. That's very important.
Thank you. Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize. I do have a few weeks of reports. First of all, just want to thank the board for allowing me to go down to the Capitol to advocate on our joint issues of priority. Really felt like the time there, I've been able to advance the priorities of this board. So I appreciate that opportunity. On February 27th, I attended the MCC JPA Board Meeting. That was a special board meeting. We did have a couple of items on the agenda. I did watch the board and Commissioner Campbell has updated this board on the actions there. That afternoon, I attended the Greater Fargo Moorhead EDC Annual Meeting that was held at Brew, Hala, and Fargo. It was great to hear all the updates of the great things happening on the North Dakota side. Certainly was hoping and wishing that we could have had more highlights from the great work that's happening on the Minnesota side. Certainly it remains a vital place to set roots and, and develop businesses. So I hope that in the future, maybe the dialogue over there will include more from the Clay County side. February 28th, I attended the Prairie Lakes, Prairie Lakes Meeting virtually in regards to all of the great work that's continuing to happen there. I think that there was some pretty good steps forward in regards to their platform on the state stage, a change from last year. Certainly it was helpful to have some more dialogue with representatives at the state, state Capitol. So Commissioner Campbell did update the board on the financial component from that meeting. On February 29th, I was at the state Capitol, met with Representative Joy in regards to the wording for our flood mitigation bill. Felt like we really did a great job of reflecting the wording that the, the diversion authority had forwarded for us to include all of the needs within Clay County and the city of Moorhead in that. So felt like we did make some headway in, in regards to that. And it was passed on to the revisers office then. March 4th, I attended the MetroCog Executive Committee Meeting. As you recall, there's some substantial need for clarification with North Dakota DOT. There was some, some funds that had been reallocated and changed that substantially affected Clay County, city of Moorhead, DeWorth planned projects on our side, but also the, the Metro West project analy, analyzation that was happening with the diversion authorities. So we did approve sending a mass email to, or letter to a lot of different state representatives on the Minnesota and North Dakota side, including the Minnesota and North Dakota governors. I'm happy to report now that we do have a meeting this week with North Dakota DOT to hopefully work through that. That evening, I had a meeting with the Executive Committee of CAPL, not Executive Committee, the Human Resources Committee of Lakes and Prairies Community Action. That was an opportunity to review the executive director, her annual review. Certainly are very fortunate to have Lori in that capacity. And the, the reviews reflected that sentiment throughout the entire executive committee. Really feel like we wanted to make sure that Align, as CAPLP is really up and coming in terms of leadership statewide. It's an organization that all of the state and national really cap agencies are looking to for their progressive views on, on leadership and training and making sure that they're meeting the needs of our communities. So I did feel like a recommendation for her salary adjustment. We'll, we'll show that. We'll have that meeting this week. March 5th, I believe, our website was live. Our new website redesign was live. I watched the board meeting and Mark Sloan had updated this board to that. I really do want to extend my thank you and gratitude to the staff members who were served in that committee. I know Jackie was part of it, but a lot of folks that extended their creative vision to how we redesigned that. And certainly hope that the new website will be an easier to navigate tool for members of our community to see what's going on with Clay County and how they can access services. That day, both March 5th and 6th, I attended the Moorhead Area Day at the Capitol. As I said earlier, thanks for the opportunity to do that. That was with the Fargo Moorhead, West Fargo Chamber. This board directed that chamber a number of years ago to help elevate the Minnesota presence at the Capitol. And certainly it was shown with the vast number of attendees, but also the meetings that we had with over 17 representatives, senators, deed commissioner, revenue commissioner, Marquart was fun to visit with, but, but certainly had an opportunity to talk a lot about what's going on border city issues, Clay County's priorities, as well as the chamber's priorities, a lot of which flood mitigation and the, our priority with the diversion authority ask was a big issue that we talked a lot about, about the 4, 52 million dollars that Clay County and the city of Moorhead are jointly advocating for. I had a great assurance from Representative Joy that our bill was in the revisers office still and would be dropping soon. That was a couple of weeks ago. So I'm hopeful that that promise is still in existence. We did have pretty good updates from, there was, both Essentia and Sanford were, were present in those discussions. And there's a lot of, a lot of issues in regards to state licensing that we've had concerns with that we were able to talk about. So overall, a very great opportunity to be there for two days to meet with lots of folks there. And then March 7th, I had, I attended the Red River Basin Commission Meeting, a long meeting that was, some folks were in Grand Forks. I attended virtually in regards to the work that the Basin Commission continues to do. They were excited that there is a Senate File 4510 and a House File 4437, 36 that was, actually Senator Kupac signed on to that, but that was in for a lot of water mitigation work throughout the entire basin. Unfortunately, that doesn't include any of the Clay County Basin Commission or Basin needs. And as we're having discussions at the Capitol, it is confusing because that's a 52, or 57 million dollar bill versus our 52 million dollar bill. So making sure that we're clarifying that that bill doesn't, doesn't fulfill the need that the diversion authority has to do the water mitigation in Clay County cemeteries, Red River Basin, or cemeteries, Buffalo Red Watershed, and the city of Moorhead. So. March 8th, I had the PRTF status meeting with Representative Keeler, as Commissioner Kavanaugh alluded to, thankful to staff and solutions for also attending that, making sure that we're clarifying the need and the wording and the direction, hopeful that we can now start reaching out, since we have so many counties that have signed on letters of support, we need to start reaching out and trying to see if we can get additional representatives and senators to sign on to that, since it really is all of Western Minnesota's counties that are supporting this need. Last week, I was gone, but did have an opportunity. Both Commissioner Campbell and I were updated on a need for a change order at the substance use facility that will be coming forward. Certainly not an enormous change order, but a change order nonetheless, but one that is vital to the, the work of that facility once it's open. So that will be coming to this board in the coming weeks. Yesterday, I attended the AMC Tax Forfeiture Work Group Meeting. Certainly, we've put an immense amount of work into the, the wording of the recommendation for that bill going forward. AMC staff, particularly Matt Hilgard, has been enormously helpful in getting that done, has had lots of meetings statewide. Yesterday, we did have to meet though, because there was a House File 4822 bill that Representative Feist introduced, and it deviates significantly from what the counties Feist introduced, and it deviates significantly from what the counties had proposed because of the judicial order and foreclosure sale process. It really relies on existing framework for forfeiture policy and going forward. And unfortunately, we don't feel like we can really support it in its entirety, because it does deviate so much from what was, what the judicial order was. So we talked a little bit about where we go from here, how we advocate for the need. It's a little disheartening that we've met for months on the framework. We had 87 counties in support of it, and we're just not feeling like the representatives of the Capitol care about that. And so unfortunately, that's, that's not something that we want to talk about, but it's the reality. And so where do we go from there? How can we support it in, in any framework? So we did talk a little bit about what the legislative path will be going forward, and appreciate that St. Louis County has done so much work in this. Appreciate that we had auditors on the, on the call, because there's some gray area that's really concerning in the framework as it stands. So the only other update I have, I apologize for it's long. I did notice that Senator Kupac and Representative Keel did submit Senate and House File Bills in the amount of $3 million for the Immigrant Development Center, the cultural mall that we talked about. So it was nice to see that they have support on that, but we really do need to lean hard into our elected representatives and senator for our diversion financing bill. That's something that we should all be reaching out individually to, asking for that, as the deadline is March 22nd for bills. I know that's a little gray, but would really be helpful for our needs if we have a House File and Senate File Bill in that amount before the 22nd. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. On March 12th, I attended the diversion authority planning committee meeting. And I, as part of that, I just want to give a little update to the report that I gave and that we talked about, and that this board took action on regarding the $8 million that would need to be deposited for the eminent domain. Working with diversion authority staff, it now it appears that the city of Fargo, who is the fiscal host of the funds for the diversion authority, will be submitting those dollars to Lori Johnson right around the 25th to the 27th timeline. So it's possible that we might not even have to do any advance dollar amounts. And so it would be a matter of days and not, not anything longer than that. So, so I want to thank Jody and Joe Paulson and those guys in working with that. That was a real concern on the part of Lori for having to advance that many dollars on that. Then at that, at that same meeting, we, we had some discussion regarding, there's ongoing discussion regarding the Christine Flood Protection Project. There's, Christine wants to have a certain level of protection, and that's, it's a little bit different than what the diversion authority was planning for. And so there gets to be some lands issues, and there could potentially be some, so Christine wants a larger footprint, I think, and so there would, there would, there would need to be some hydraulic work done to determine what that would do to water levels and that type of thing. So that, that work continues, and dialogue continues on with them on that. We also had quite a bit of discussion regarding an abandoned rail, the abandoned rail corridor and the CHS elevator property. Those items now are, we're going to be following the excess lands policy on, on some of those issues. And it's, it gets quite complicated, so Jody has mentioned that she might need to request a slight alteration to the excess lands policy to make these things work. So, but as that goes on, it'll, that'll certainly be vetted out through the lands committee and, and ultimately the full, full diversion authority board. And then the, yesterday, as all of you, I attended the Township Officers Meeting. It's always, it's always a good meeting to go to, and I like to kind of hear more about what townships are doing, but, but again, I want to agree with, with the commissioners who have expressed the thank yous for our county staff and their reports. I think they're thorough and, and, and I did want to, there were some questions regarding to Justin regarding the North Broadway Bridge, and they were primarily from the folks up north. And I took them aside and told them about the, you know, the, where this thing has gone in terms of what the original price was and what it's estimated to be now. And, I mean, there certainly is, there's a lot of support up there that want to see that done. And I, I basically told them that, you know, we, we don't have an open checkbook for, for that. And right now, the, even at the cheapest project cost now, we're talking 15 to 20 million as opposed to the original $5 million. And so, you know, and I, you know, and when you, you know, and when you look at Clay County being, having a 50-50 cost share, now all of a sudden, you're looking at the Minnesota side maybe having to come up with $7.5 to $10 million. And then if we were to go through the bridge bonding, and of course, the bridge bonding rules on anything that attaches to a county-stated highway road is that they match 50-50 with local. And, and I just emphasized that were the case, and it was $5 million local, that would, that would be in excess of one entire year's worth of all of our projects in Clay County. So I, you know, it's a, it's an uphill battle to, to see this done, but I mentioned that this board, you know, was concerned about where it was going, and, but I, I let them know that the board was still open for future dialogue. But unless there's, unless there's some really significant changes in the financial component here, and one of the things we're still working on is, is would MinDOT allow the local cost share to be, have a resource other than Clay County to, to take care of, of the local share? So, and that, that's yet to be determined. I know Justin is working on trying to get those answers. But I, I thought that was an important for them. They really shared some concern about that. I know there was talk of starting to write letters of, you know, wanting people to support it. So I just, I kind of wanted to fill them in on, on where that project stands. And then lastly, I think, you know, in Justin's report he gave, he talked a little bit about that we now have those two electronic signs, I think he said, right? And I was just, I was just wondering, I see an awful lot on social media right now of discussions about where the DMV project is going, and, and some are saying, well, it hasn't even started yet, and, you know, and I, yeah, well, we got a, building frame is up. But I'm just thinking, maybe Steve, sometime, maybe more towards the summer, maybe the August, September timeframe, that if those signs aren't being used for something, we could put one of those out there that just says "Future Home of DMV," and just to start to get the, the knowledge going and the education about where that's going to be, I think that could be helpful. And, you know, so maybe you, if you would be able to coordinate that with Justin, I think that might be something worthwhile for us to do. Not only as to when it would open, but where it is. You know, I think it's, I think that might be helpful. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Oh.
Just follow up a little bit with that, and Steve, maybe, is there any notices going up at the DMV right now itself?
Most of our focus has been that we're remaining there at this point. We haven't, I don't think we've talked a whole lot about.
But again, maybe down the road, it could be even there so people know where they're going to be going.
And the 13th, I attended the North, virtually attended the Northwest Regional Emergency Communication Board of Directors Meeting along with the, as I'll look for my notes, along with the Regional Advisory Committee. Had an interesting presentation regarding a portable console. Basically, it's a laptop that can be equipped to operate as a 911 center console out in the field. It's about $40,000 we're spending in the region of some state funds to get one set up in this area just as a prototype. But it's, it's just a glimpse into what we're looking at on nine, future 911, next generation 911 capacity. And Brian Zastapil, our director, or our operations person at Red River Regional Dispatch Center, and with the Northwest Regional Group, did the presentation. It was pretty impressive. Had a discussion on 911 funding options. There is funding coming. At this point, there is that pool of money from the 911 fees and unspent money that was approved by the legislature that's sitting out there, at an unknown amount of it. What they're telling us now is they're going to continue with five region outstate and in the metro regions in doing evaluations. They are supplying a third source, a third-party resource to come in and do the evaluation of 911 center needs, and they're, that's being prototyped in the north, or no, I'm sorry, southeast district right now. We'll see how it works. Hopefully, we can get things moving along, get some of the money in circulation. And it was a review of some of the 2020, or some of the things that are going to be moved over to the 2025 session, and we are not going to be able to get worked on in this one. On the 14th, I attended Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, which Commissioner Gross reported on, but there was one thing, it's kind of a, after meeting conversation more than anything, we, we did discuss the TARA, the Toxic Exposure Risk Activity Funding that's out there for veterans. It's been limited. What they have done now is it's been expanded, and it is for medical care, it's for health services, not, not cash, but more people now are, are being made eligible for it. It's based on not just a deployed situation where they were exposed to toxic, toxic activities, but it can happen stateside as well. Depends on what their exposure was. Kurt Cannon tells me there's a form called the 1010 that they'll have to revise if they want to try for this. All the details, you can contact the, our veteran service officer, or I've got a number they wanted me to get out, 1-800-698-2411. It's 698-2411. Press option two. They've got operators that are going to be 24/7 at this number with the VA, who can answer questions and help people if they have questions about their potential eligibility, and then get them directed in the right direction if they determine, if they decide that they may be eligible. The way I wanted to put that plug in there, it sounds like a good, good opportunity to get healthcare, some of our veterans who earned it, being exposed to toxic materials. And I also attended the Township Officers Meeting yesterday that's been covered. Once again, just kudos to our staff and kudos to our administrator. We really meet the needs of the people in our county as represented by the township boards, and a great meeting, really proud of us. That concludes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr.
Sorry. Mr. Chair, if I might, really briefly, I just heard from Representative Keeler. I'd reached out to her this morning in regards to the status of our bills. She just told me that we did get a hearing scheduled for next week on our PRTF facility. She's asked me, we'll work on the, providing a testifier and one person on deck to help with any technical questions, but she did ask that we build our written testimony. That's where the county, community, and tribal support will be the most impactful. So, you know, I, I think we can work on that today, reaching out, how I reported on it earlier, but certainly exciting to know that we have a hearing.
Yeah, it's very good.
It is. Kevin?
Yeah, I, whatever. I know Commissioner Mojo and Kravenoff have been working strongly in that, and, and, you know, anything if one of them could, could be available for that, as well as certainly talking with Rhonda to, for that technical support, I think would be really important.
When is the hearing?
I just apologize. I'm trying to look through the schedule right now to see which day particularly, and I did ask her, but I haven't heard, but she just said next week.
And if I, oh, I'm sorry. Were you done?
I, I think we might want to entertain a motion for travel and per diem on that. If you've got to get.
Yeah, I, either, I mean, depending on the day, I think it would be for either Commissioner Kravenoff and I and staff.
We'll figure it out.
If we could get a motion for that, we'll just have that on deck for whoever we need to go.
Would that fall under your committee or not?
Technically, probably not, but so a motion would probably be best.
I, I would, I would make the motion to allow either Commissioner Mojo or Kravenoff the opportunity, along with the staff, to attend any hearings related to the proposed facility.
Cover expenses on that.
With, yeah, per diem and expenses, yes.
Do I have a second? Okay, we have motion, second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same side. Motion passes.
I do have one other question. Going back to Commissioner Mojo, when you were talking about the upcoming, getting more support regarding the diversion bonding. Do we want to, I'm just saying, we had a couple days here, do we want to make one more joint letter as a board to go down there? Would that be appropriate, rather than individuals, or, I mean, just kind of ask him where we're at, what your thoughts are?
I appreciate bringing it up. I think it's, it's something that this board needs to continue to advocate for the need. So I, I don't think that would hurt. I think reiterating what our initial action was, supporting the entire ask, yeah, I don't think that would hurt.
I just feel like we're, we're standing alone in this. That's the feeling I get, and, and I think maybe we need to be rather just than a, you know, Jenny's voice, you know, as she contacts these people, you know, it's, it's a, it's a bigger voice. It's what Clay County needs.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Kravenoff, I agree that, I agree with that, and with your assessment even, that like we're sometimes standing alone. I know Commissioner Mojo and I have had multiple meetings with the city of Moorhead in regards to ultimately what the finances needed from the Minnesota side. And as we had our county days at the Capitol, we had prepared documents that showed all of the needs of Minnesota. And within those documents, we even stated that, you know, there was a certain amount of money that was needed to complete the projects, and that was at the request of the legislatures. They wanted to know the full amount to finally be done with this. So we provided that information to them. The following week, when we got back, I had it specifically stated that should, into the record here for historic purposes, that we're fulfilling our obligation through the contract with the diversion authority. But it, you know, and so we've had multiple conversations, and what would that layout look like? We even agreed that, you know, any of the dollars that, that we were to get would first go towards completing the work of the in-town lab is of Moorhead. We talked about all that, and we agreed to all that. But it seems to me that, that there seems to be. But it seems to me that, that there seems to be a, a separate approach being, being done right now by our, our local counterpart on this. And, and I, it's, it's frustrating to me that that's occurring and, and I'm, I'm just hopeful that, you know, we, we can both be advocating for what the total needs of this county are. And that, and that total needs includes the city of Morehead. And, you know, I, we need to, you know, as we work on this MCC JPA and we're making, trying to make commitments with our landowners south of town, and we're trying to be fair with them financially, and to know that we have that financial backing to be able to really support our efforts is really important. And, and so I, I agree, Paul, that, that last, maybe correspondence through a resolution by this board would, would be helpful.
Would the resolution be directed at City of Morehead, the legislature, our legislative contingent, or what?
So a little, you know, I alluded in my report that, that Representative Joy had said our wording was in the reviser's office and would be expected to drop within a couple of days. You know, that was, that was before I went down for Morehead Day at the Capitol. At Morehead Day at the Capitol, it was understood that, that we would have a bill dropped within the end of the week. I emailed him this morning and his response was that he had just heard back from the reviser's office and the jackets are not quite back yet. There seems to be an issue in why it was so, it was going so quickly. There was some comments at this, Morehead Day at the Capitol, that Morehead had, had problems with what the proposed language was, even though they'd been provided that. My concern is that, that that caused a hiccup, and so I know that I have a, a meeting on Thursday with Representative Keeler and members, delegates from the city of Morehead about continuing forward with the dialogue for the need. It is a little apparent that they're pushing the 14 and a half, that the city of Morehead needs more than the entire need. And, and our standpoint has obviously been that we're pushing for the entire amount because that's the entire amount that's needed. That's the entire amount for cemetery mitigation, buffalo red components, land, all, all of those vital pieces. So I think to your question is who, where does the resolution go? I think the, the resolution would be from this entire board that, that we're supporting the entire need to the representatives, both Joy and, and Keel and Keeler. And I also think to Senator Johnson and Senator Kupac that that's, that's what we've been asking. We haven't deviated from, from what we're asking because the need still exists. I think internally, we can and have reached out to members from the city of Morehead that, that maintains what the need is and why it makes more sense to be united rather than fractured. And I'm hopeful that those hiccups do not derail the entire ask, really.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, you know, I don't want to get too far in the weeds here, but, but I think, you know, maybe, you know, part of the questions that have been raised by Morehead was, you know, they've, in their past work that they've done on these things and, and through their DNR grant, there's been a local share that's had to come up with. And, and they've had a process where they paid for that local share. And they, they might be questioning now, okay, well, what, what, what will the county's local share be based on the 37 million that the county is asking for? And I guess our, our feeling on that is that the, the, the local share has been more than paid for already with, with all the work that's already been done. You know, it's, it's actually been funded, the local share has been funded through the diversion authority. But every, every dollar that we spent on land acquisitions and everything to date on the Minnesota side has already been paid for, and we're not even asking for money for that anymore. So, so we have had a local share. Now, where the funds came from, we have the support of the diversion authority to pay for those, but it still is a local share that's been paid. And I, you know, and I, I think that needs to be part of the understanding, the dialogue that, that is out there. That there has been a large local share. I mean, every time we have an MCC JPA meeting, we're spending, spending money. And that's local money. That's going towards costs of the project on the Minnesota side of the river. So.
I, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, I think to piggyback off your question earlier and maybe some of what Commissioner Campbell was talking about. For, for good reason, probably, I think the city of Morehead, because of the way the funds need to come in and how they can be allocated and what can receive reimbursement and what can't. I think it would help reassure the city of Morehead if we did pass an internal resolution from this board that says, should X amount of money come in, Clay County acknowledges that the first $14.71 million would go to complete components of the city of Morehead's need. And I, I think that would go a long way to, we've said that, outwardly said that to the city of Morehead. I think that would go a long way to help reassure the city of Morehead that should $25 million come in, Clay County's understanding is that we're not going to take $25 million and utilize these projects. We would allocate $14.71 as a pass-through to the city of Morehead for their components.
Go ahead.
That's, that's an excellent point, I think. And, and I think if, I think there was a proposed language in a, in a jacket that was done for the total ask. And, and within that, what Commissioner Mojo just referenced states it quite clearly in that jacket document, that, that we are committed and, and that, you know, the first funds need to go towards Morehead. And that's, that's in the proposed jacket, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, that, that had been forwarded on to the city, had it not?
Yes, I received that from Executive Director Paulson. We had forwarded that exact language to the city of Morehead. During our AMC Legislative Conference, there's been no additions directed from this board to change that. And it, it does say in the bonding request sheet that we've given to everyone that the funding request would be used to complete the remaining components within the city of Morehead first.
I think those are assurances that drive the discussion. And if we need to put it in a resolution to make it even clearer, maybe that will remind our partner that we're partners and that we have to make an agreement on what our mutual needs are, how we're going to address those needs and to move forward together as opposed to lobby against each other.
I, I think in terms of transparency and clarity, I would feel more at peace if we directed staff to work towards drafting a resolution based on the document in which we're lobbying for, for action at a board meeting on Tuesday, next Tuesday. I think that would, I would feel better about that than just all of a sudden changing something now.
Does that, does that run in, what's the timeline for, isn't the 22nd?
The timeline is, I mean, there is a drop date of the 22nd. There's a little bit of leeway with that. But I guess to both, all of our points, though, we've already, we're already advocating for a sheet in which it says it. We're already advocating for bill language that, that says the first $14.71 would go to Morehead. But just in, in terms of clarifying that the resolution based on 2024's legislative ask would include the $14.71 going to Morehead first.
Yeah, we can, we certainly can draw that up for next week. We talked a little bit today and on to, to the 22nd date of used, used resolution and letter of support. And so we would be using this resolution in lieu of the letter of support, or letter to our legislators, just to clarify. With the understanding it would be aft, after the 22nd.
Is that, if I may, is that a miss then? You know, I mean, should we just, I, I don't, if we got a hard date, don't we need to work with a hard date?
Some, part, if I may, Mr. Chair, sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think part of, part of my concern is that I don't feel like this resolution goes to support the conversations that we're having in St. Paul. I think those conversations stand on its own based on what we've provided the legislature with. For whatever reason, I feel like a resolution would go to qualm what the city of Morehead's maybe comments are. And I, I guess I'm not sure if it's even comments, but I just, based on some feedback and body language in regards to how we're going about this jointly, maybe that would help them more? I don't know.
It's restating what's actually come from the Executive Director of the diversion. And his, I mean, this is how we proceeded, but if we need to restate it to meet concerns of a partner, I think that's a legitimate.
I think if we were to do that Tuesday, I, I don't think that we're backtracking or ignoring the deadline need. I think we still in the interim should today have a motion of, of support, reiterating our stance on it and sending a letter of support from this whole board. I think that makes, makes sense. I think at some point, the diversion authority needs to be more actively supporting this initiative on the Minnesota side. And they've done that for a long time, but I think there needs to be some sort of legislative report at the diversion authority that says this is Clay County's legislative priority. Same to, to Representative Keeler's comment, we need to continue to build, you know, a, a case for why this is so needed. We need the diversion authority to back us and say, we need you to advocate for that whole amount. And they've done it through, through comments for a long time, but it helps our case.
Steve, are you clear on where we're going with this, or do you have any?
Yeah, I, we certainly, we can provide a, a letter of support. We can also work on a resolution. I think my only concern that I have is what I'm hearing from the board is that from our legislators' perspective, what they want to hear from us is having a unified ask from the city of Morehead. Our concern is that, that there may be additional information that's being shared by representatives from the city of Morehead. Would it be beneficial to make sure that we have that, that, I guess, that figured out here first prior to? Because otherwise, as, as mentioned, we're reiterating, we're saying we're reiterating something that we agree on when, when we're also reporting that maybe isn't the case.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair, I mean, I mean, I think the reason we're doing that, this is the way it needs to happen. We need to have this conversation here. And it has been proposed to representatives from the city of Morehead as to why, why we're not hearing that same unified ask. And there's concern from the representatives that are in those meetings from Morehead that there isn't broad support from the Morehead City Council for the entire ask, and that's why it's not been brought to them.
And we've not, this has not been an issue they've discussed, I mean, as a group, to our knowledge.
Well, no, it's, the entire ask, I'm not, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but this is, this is the reality. The reality is, when Morehead set their legislative priorities, after we asked them for feedback on this entire ask, they did not include any of the Clay County needs. So in the minutes, based on conversations that happened at the Morehead City Council, they've not prioritized this ask. Even though they're members of the MCC JPA and they understand there's a requirement that the Minnesota side advocates for them this, even though they've, they've been part of that dialogue. My argument is, as a representative to this board, it's my obligation to report to you all that happens in my committees. And this is a committee that I've been part of, that city of Morehead folks have been a part of. And so there are Morehead City Council members that should be aware that they have a due diligence to advocate for funding for land acquisitions when they actively serve on the Morehead-Clay County Joint Powers Committee that is voting for those components. I asked the mayor if you could, if you could bring the Clay County priorities to this city council for, for a motion of support. And it was, said that that would not be happening.
So we're, we're discussing a letter and a resolution or a resolution?
My understanding is this board is asked to send a letter reaffirming our support of, of, of the legislative priority that this board has made to our local legislators, and then also then provide a letter or a resolution next Tuesday that would, would also reiterate that, that information.
Mr. Chair, me if I can, just to go back a little bit here too, and I, you know, I, you start talking a little bit about the historical component of this and, and the financial piece and ask that's, that was asked of Minnesota. The Minnesota, when I say Minnesota being Morehead and Clay County with the funding coming through, through the state. And what, and what we're being asked for. The full diversion authority received a complete project budget through the Finance Committee that I think you serve on the Finance Committee. And that, and that, that full budget is, is a, is a budget that's, consists of through project completion. You know, whether that, you know, whether it's a 2.7, but there's, there's portions of it that's federally, and then there's portions that, that's been funded by the state. But to pay for, so in order to have this financial plan, you had to come up with, okay, where's, where's the money going to come from to fully pay for this completed project? And so when it was established, there was $86 million that was put in for the state of Minnesota, for the Minnesota side. And the full diversion authority, that, you know, so that was the revenues that would come in to cover that cost. And so that's been programmed in as revenue into this project. Now, all of a sudden, if that revenue doesn't come in, the project is going to be short funds based on, on those revenues that don't show up. And so the question becomes what, what, you know, what will happen at that point in time? What's going to be asked of the, of the local governments? Because those funds, and, and the least we need to do and we're committed to do through, through the Joint Powers Board is to advocate for the funding in St. Paul. And we shouldn't be advocating for a portion of it. We should be advocating for all of it. And it seems to me that there's, there's, there's a, a push for the city of Morehead to ask just for what Morehead needs. But Morehead's protection doesn't stop, and their protection doesn't just their in-town levees. It's all of the work and all of the lands that we've asked these rural people to give up. And, and so we should be advocating on behalf of all of them to make all of those costs, you know, appropriate. So, so it, it's frustrating to me that, that we're not, we're not reading this document that we all signed in terms of, of what we, and what our financial intent was to do. And if you want, we can pull out the bullet points of that document. And I know this is, it's, it's frustrating and we're down to the wire here. And I'm, I'm certainly disappointed that we, we aren't following with, it appears that we're not following through with what we said we would advocate for as joint entities on the Minnesota side. So whatever resolutions you do at this point, they, something, we need to do something to get this cleared up.
So I'm, I might have maybe a path forward. So I think that asking staff to, to create a resolution of understanding for if funds are received this legislative session based on the ask. are received this legislative session based on the ask, making sure that 14 gets their components paid for first. So I think we should, would do that for Tuesday. But I think we should also ask the City of Morehead for a resolution of support for the entire ask as well. And I don't think, one, I think we should ask that, to the, submit that to the city manager for the, their action and say that we're also drafting a resolution of support that Clay County will allocate the funds as I just talked about. And I, I think that we've gone on record by saying we support this entire ask. It's not, we're not advocating for Clay County more than we're advocating for the City of Morehead. We're advocating for $52.42 million. And I think we should ask our partner, because we're partners on this ask and this venture together, to do the same. And if the City of Morehead wants to go on record however they may, then they can do that.
We are partners, have been for years in, in this diversion project, and it is a little disheartening. Maybe we can get that spirit of partnership back with the assurances, I thought we've already done it from the sound of it, that Morehead will get their needs met first. But we, you know, we, our citizens, everybody in my district lives in Morehead. But we are representing those people as well. It's not just Morehead City Council. And for the people that don't live in Morehead, I mean, the tax burden is there for them too. So I, I just, I think a resolution is a good idea. I think, could, could we get a letter out quick enough to get it to our legislators before the 22nd?
We certainly could.
The resolution can wait until next week for us to vote on it. But I think this is, and it's, it's hopefully something that we can collegially work through. But we can't go up there and just lobby for, for the, the immediate needs of our own group. We have to look at the entire partnership. And on the Minnesota side, that, that's comprised of the county and the city and a lot of rural people that are impacted by this as well. So do we have a motion? It's clear enough to proceed on.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to have staff draft a letter on behalf of the, this entire board that reiterates our support for our bonding request, given the timeline, hoping to have that to our legislators in the next 48 hours.
I would second that one.
Any further discussion? And this is just the letter at this point?
Right.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Okay, I'd entertain a motion on a resolution.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to direct staff to draft a resolution based on the priorities because of this discussion that we've had for next week, but also to direct them to forward a request from the City of Morehead asking a resolution of support.
We have a second?
I'll second that motion also.
Any discussion? Okay, well, I guess we need a motion on this, although if we directed staff to prepare a resolution, it would have to be voted on next week when we have the resolution in front of us. But all in favor of directing staff to prepare this resolution, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, both of those passed. I appreciate the input from my fellow commissioners here and the insight that they can give us as a group. We have to do this in body. People think we discuss this stuff when the cameras aren't on. That's not the case. And this has given me a lot of information. I hope it's something we can resolve in, in an amicable way and reassure the city that we're honest partners and that we're going to work in this for mutual benefit, not just our own benefit. And I hope that, that trust is there and I hope we can just remind each other of it. Anything further on this or not? We'll move on to Steve for the report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The 12th, I participated in the PRTF Planning Commission, Planning Meeting that's been covered by Commissioner Mojo and Commissioner Kravinaoff. Again, just, I did talk to Rhonda yesterday. She did also reach out to three, the three tribes in our region, Leech Lake, White Earth and, and Red Lake, and all agreed that they would provide a letter of support or a resolution of support for that, the formation of that facility, acknowledging there's not enough beds in Minnesota. On 13th, we had a management, we talked about the legislative session, technology updates, NACO training opportunity this board approved, risk management, capital planning and some HR updates. On 14th and 15th, I had multiple calls with Rhonda and Commissioner Kravinaoff in regards to the PRTF. Yesterday, I participated in the Township Officers Meeting. Again, thank, thank our staff for being there. And again, I thought it was a, they always are, but particularly yesterday, really great questions from, from the Township officials from Clay County. So thank you for allowing us to be there. Also had a series of issues covered with Darren yesterday. I did mention at our township meeting, again, yesterday, that deed did come out last week with an additional $50 million of border-to-border. And so as we talked about last week, while only one of our two grant applications that we supported through Red River Communication that was approved, there may be some opportunity. I've already had some contact with their Executive Director and they're hoping to have a meeting with us here in the coming week or so. Just a few other updates. Wanted to talk, touch base, our, our Red River Water District Formation is looking to go forward either Thursday or Friday. Their flattering hood is looking to bring that forward to the courts. And so there will be a press release that will be coming out through their offices either Friday or Monday, which we'll make sure that, that we add to our social media platforms. Just note yesterday, the Minnesota DNR did put a burning ban out in Clay County. The only exception would be campfires until further notice. Just a reminder that we do have interviews Wednesday, or excuse me, Friday morning for our Social Service Director position starting at 8:30 here, here in this area. And then just of note, we, we also have posted the 11th Street Underpass groundbreaking ceremony. The City of Morehead has offered an opportunity to provide the county to, to speak at the event. It starts at 10:30. It's going to be about a 30-minute ceremony and then they'll move over to the ceremonial shovel. Based on that, they do also would offer a, an elected spot for the shovel position if there would be anyone interested. So if anybody has interest in speaking or also participating in the shovel ceremony, please let me know. And lastly, just a reminder that we'll have a work session this afternoon at 1 o'clock with the Clay County HRA. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Anything, Brian? Jackie? Kevin?
Just one, I'd like to request one final thing here if I could, and maybe Steve can forward to the Executive Director of the Diversion Authority. Could, could we get a dollar amount that has been spent to date on land acquisitions, right-of-ways and easements in Minnesota through the MCC JPA? I, you know, I think as we move forward with the dialogue, I think that's important to understand that there's been a, a local payment already, a significant payment made. So, and then lastly on the, are you, do you plan on going to that deal?
Yeah, and I'm sure this time, if everybody's comfortable with it, I'd be happy to speak.
Yeah, if you can speak and then I'd, I'd like to do the shovel thing. It's my district and I'll do the shovel thing. He can do the talking and I'll do the digging.
That'll work.
I plan on being there.
We have a substantial investment of county funding into this, so I appreciate that we're included this time on, on the events. What, we, 1.5 mil? And that's, that's a lot of money in, 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 looking at the overall cost, it's not insignificant, but it's a pretty pricey thing, but that we've got a lot of good funding for it, so. Anything else? Anything additional? Okay, we're adjourned.